Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the Selectmen's meeting.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Could you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to ask Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini to lead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'd like to say good evening to my fellow Board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
I want to say good evening to our Town Manager, Mrs. Scott Crabtree.
Good evening.
I also want to mention that we had a goal and objective meeting earlier this evening, and I want to thank the Town Manager for updating the Board. This Board has come up with quite a few priorities for this administration, and we sincerely appreciate the update this evening.
I only have about another 50 minutes.
Perfect.
At the manager's update tonight.
Perfect. Can't wait. Thank you. And our Clerk Meredith, thank you for coming. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home, this meeting is being recorded. The first item is under correspondence. We have Black Friday requests for Kohl's 333 Broadway for extended hours on Friday, November 28th, 2025, Black Friday, from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. This is something that Kohl's has typically asked for. I don't see anybody from Kohl's in the audience, but this is the typical request that we receive every year.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the request. We always do this with the business community for Black Friday.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. We did get some late correspondence regarding a citation for Millie Doucette, who's celebrating her 100th birthday. The Board of Selectmen signed a citation this evening, and it will be delivered to her, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Our first public hearing of the night. Notice is hereby given that the Sargus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Quan Fo Inc. for a common vicchores and an entertainment license to operate Quan Fo 184 Broadway, number 10 Sargus, Mass. 01906. Coy Nguyen, 48, Leonardo Avenue, Malden, Mass., owner-manager. This public hearing will be held in the Sargus Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 298 Central Street, on October 14, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Hi, good evening. Could you please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. So my name... Yes. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Coy Nguyen. I'm the owner of Quan Fo. Used to be Long Noodle House before. Yes.
Now, is this business being transferred over to you? Is this a family business?
Yes. Actually, I'm a co-owner of Long Noodle House as well, with my father and my brother.
With your brother? So it's being transferred from your brother to you?
Yes.
I see. And you want three TVs?
Yes.
And karaoke?
Yes.
And the hours of operation, you said something to me a little bit different than what's in your package. What are the hours you're looking for, please?
Our hour is 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That's just the hour we open the restaurant, but for the karaoke, only like nighttime.
Okay.
Like, maybe, let's say, 7:00 to 10:30. So, because we close at 11:00, so like 10:30 is done, so people get ready to go home.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Just a question on the corrected license. We have on here till 2:00 a.m. for hours of operation. It says 10...
2:00 p.m.
Nope, it says 2:00 a.m. at the very top. And then down below, for hours, it says 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So I think this needs to be modified further. We can make the vote and have him update the paperwork, but if he's asking for 7:00 to 10:30 for the live TVs and karaoke, I would assume the live TVs are going to be during hours of operation. It's just the live, the karaoke that you would ask for 7:00 to 10:30.
Yes.
So anybody who makes a motion, if we do vote in the affirmative, should consider hours of operation. He's asking for 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and that's seven days a week. And then...
Oh, can I make sure? Only like, we only make like two days a week for the karaoke, only two days a week, not every day.
Okay, so hours, your regular hours of operations for the common vicchores license is Monday through Sunday, 10:00 to 11:30. You only want karaoke on Friday and Saturday?
Um, we only like, when we open...
You have to specify if you want certain nights of the week.
We were thinking about like, maybe Tuesday, one day in the weekend. Yeah, we're not going to make like two day in a row.
Tuesday and, do you have a day on the weekend, Saturday?
Saturday, yeah, Saturday.
Tuesday and Saturday karaoke. So I think whomever makes the recommendation, if that's the direction we're going, it would be Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Karaoke Tuesday and Saturday on the entertainment license, Tuesday and Saturday from 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. And then televisions, the live TVs, would be the same hours of operation as 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m.
And in your application, you said you want 40 seats?
Um, yes.
So you know that that's four less than they're already approved for?
Yes.
Right? Your license currently is 44, right? That's what I saw on the...
Yeah, the original license that your brother, when he came before us, he asked for 44 seats. If you're having the same number of seats and you're not changing anything, you probably want to have the 44 seats. But if you're going to change things up and you want the 40 seats, we need to be very specific when we give you the license.
Yes. Actually, we have like, right now, let's say we have like 40 seats, but we have like four chair extra outside. If like some table, like let's say the table for four people, but now they go five, we can like bring another, one chair for like one people can share on the same table. If the total for the four tables in there, in there is going to be four more chair. So the total inside right now is like 40 chair, and we have like four chair to just another side for like, if some, for extra.
Waiting?
Yeah, for waiting, yeah.
Waiting area?
No, not waiting area. Let's say, let a group come to the restaurant, we have only one table, but only four chair right now.
Okay. So what is the maximum number of people you want to be able to seat, not including the wait, anybody waiting? The number of people, customers, that can be served at one, sitting one time, is 40 or 44?
44.
44.
Yes, but I've only set up in, in a, it's only 40.
All right, so I would recommend that you ask for 44 then, not 40. Because if you ask for 40, and we give you 40, then you don't have the four extra seats if people come in. Right now, you're approved for 40, the, under your old ownership with your brother and your father, you're approved for 44 seats. So you want to keep 44 seats.
Yes.
So Meredith, Madam Chair, through you. Meredith, this license application will just have to be modified to pick up the 44 seats instead of the 40 seats and the correct hours of operation in two different locations.
Do Board members have any additional questions this evening for the applicant?
No, Madam Chairman. It's basically the same operation that they have now.
Is it the same menu?
Um, yes.
So everything is pretty much staying the same?
Pretty much stay the same.
Very good.
And actually, yeah.
So if there are no more questions from Board members, I'm going to open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Madam Chair, before I make a motion, I want to make sure that all the fellow Board members are comfortable with us doing one. Do you want one motion for both the common vic and entertainment? I'll just specify, or you want to do separate?
We usually do separate. I think I recommended that.
All right, so I'll do a separate motion. So Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant the request of Coy Nguyen, 48 Leonardo Ave., Malden, Mass., for the owner-manager of Quan Fo Inc. for the common vicchores license. The common vicchores license would be a maximum seating of 44 seats, and his hours of operation, as per our discussion, is Monday through, Monday through Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and I believe subject to fire inspection.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, my motion for the same applicant, this time on the entertainment license. The entertainment license would be for the televisions to be operable on Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and for karaoke to be present on the establishment Tuesday and Saturday evenings only. And the Tuesday to Saturday would be the hours on that, 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
I'm sorry, and the TVs would be three televisions.
Okay.
My apologies.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you and good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. It is now time for our Town Manager's report. Mr. Town Manager? You have 50 minutes. Go.
Also known as 3 minutes and 20 seconds.
I only have some good stuff here. I have the Town of Sargus announces our fall curbside leaf collection dates. This is already out, and it's on our website. And just to reiterate, I think, in our, from our last meeting, to remind everybody, we are in the process of upgrading our website, and we're in full development with that. They tell us it's a six-month process. We've been in it for a little bit already, but my guess will be a little bit more than six months. But that would give us a whole new platform, more, you know, what most other communities are trying to go to, that would allow us to put information in and send it to residents and whoever signs up for notices and notifications with one streamlined process. Right now, we have, we're using like three different systems. We're using Blackwood Connect, and then we're also using our website, and it, one doesn't do phone numbers and the other one does, that will do emails. But anyways, that's in the process, but again, this is up already. So fall leaf pickup, Monday, November 3rd through Friday, November 7th, Monday, November 17th through Friday, November 21st, and Monday, December 8th through Friday, December 12th. I know, I had got some calls, and people were asking about it, even before the leaves fell off the trees, if you can imagine that. They were adamant about having dates and when they were coming. So this is the announcement, we are coming. We didn't forget about you. Please look onto the website. I won't go through everything here, but it basically does certain areas at certain times, you know, with your regular pickup. And you got three weeks to get everything out, and hopefully you get things in pot. And there's always the option of bringing up the compost up at the Charm Center as well. So hopefully people take advantage of that. It's a great program and something that's paid for by the town. Town of Sargus also is going to hold a free COVID-19 and flu vaccine clinic here at the Town Hall for the Sargus residents. And so this, you can get both or you get either one. So we're hoping that people that don't find it as convenient maybe to go to CVS or Walgreens, things have changed obviously with vaccinations, but we want to make sure we offer them here for employees and residents that might want to come into Town Hall and do that. The Health Department and the Town Nurse are running the event, and it's on Monday, October 20th, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., and on Tuesday, October 28th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Clinic is open to Sargus residents and Town of Sargus employees. At the clinic, healthcare professionals from Walgreens will administer the latest COVID-19 booster vaccine, as well as seasonal flu vaccine, all at no cost. High dose flu vaccines will also be available at the clinic for individuals age 65 and older. Walk-ins are welcome for the clinic. No pre-registration is required. The town asks clinic attendees to bring proof of insurance with them to the clinic. And recommend people stay up to date with COVID, that's what the Mass Department of Public Health recommends, and flu vaccines in order to protect yourself, your family, and your community from illnesses. So anyways, that's, that's on the website as well, and that went out, I think, for public, public release. And the last thing I have is the Town of Sargus will be hosting another Household Hazardous Waste Day. We are pleased to announce that the Town of Sargus will host a hazardous household waste day on Saturday, November 1st, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Belmonte Steam Academy, 25 Dow Street. There is no cost to Sargus residents to discount allowable items at the household waste, Household Hazardous Waste Day. No appointment is necessary. The key word in that is allowed. So you just have to make sure you know what's allowed and what's not. That's on the website, and you can take a look at that. It'll give you all the information, the following, just give you an idea. The following items can be disposed at this event are acids, corrosives, aerosol cans, art supplies, batteries, chemistry sets, and photography chemicals, fiberglass resins, furniture, floor, metal polish, polishers and strippers, mercury-containing devices, mothballs, crystals, oil paints, rugs, and upholstery, cleaners, solvents, solvent adhesives, turpentine, and paint solvents, wood preservatives, hair dye, nail polish remover, toilet cleaners, brighteners, chlorine, bleach, spot removers, spray starch, whiteners, drain, and oven cleaners. Lawn and garden is cesspool cleaners, flammable liquids, flea and tick powders, fire starters, herbicides and pesticides, no pest strips, poisonous poisons, pool chemicals, propane tanks, empty up to 20 pounds, automobile products, antifreeze batteries, brake fluids, carburetor cleaner, oil, radiator flush, flush solvents and degreases, tire cleaners, transmission fluids. Latex paints can be dried out and disposed of with your curbside trash. So just understand that, the paints, you can, you can put them out, actually Home Depot and Lowe's, they sell something that I think makes them, hardens them up, and you can put them out to the regular trash. If you have any questions about what you can and can't save your trip, call Scott Brazes at 781-231-4036 with any questions, and please check the website out for any further information. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Do Board members have any questions for the Town Manager this evening? I think we asked enough for questions an hour ago, right?
I want my hat.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the August 19th, 2025 minutes. Could somebody please make their motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion. We approve the minutes.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
My apologies, I missed it in my first review. Just, Meredith, if you could just do a search and replace, we say Lieutenant Connor versus Connors in a couple spots. I just want to make sure we get the spelling correct. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Very good. So with that said, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Next, we have appointments. First, we, we received a letter from Sue Palumba. She was the president of SETV. We appreciate all of the work and effort she did on the SETV Board, but we do need a motion to accept her resignation. And I would also like to put in there, if we could also write her a letter thanking her for her years of service on that cable board.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Next, Darren Ring was someone who came up. He was interested in a cable appointment. There were two, two people that weren't chosen, and one is running for school committee. Darren was still interested in being on the Board of Directors. We were all very impressed with his qualifications. If we want Darren to replace Sue, Sue's term would have expired in January 31st, 2027. If we want to just have him come in and replace her term, that would be when it would term.
I'll offer that motion, Madam Chairman.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and I thank Darren Ring for stepping up and helping with the cable board. And next, we have Robert Northrup. He requested he has been a, on the zoning board of appeals, but not as a full-time member, and he is requesting now to be a full-time member with the, he would be placing, replacing Stephanie Romano as a full-time member. Now, her term expires March 31st, 2026, so if we want this to be replacement, that would be where the, when the term would end, and then he would have to come back next year and would give him, we'd just reappoint him, if that is, if that is the wishes of the new board. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll offer that motion with the appointment to expire, 3/31/26.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Madam Chairman, just one question.
Of course.
I guess I'll ask it to the manager. Regarding that appointment, does he have to come in and get sworn in as a full-time member where he's already a temporary member now, or?
I think he would have to do a full-time. It's probably a different appointment.
So come in and gets sworn in again?
Yeah.
He'll be, he was asking me about it, he'll be very happy.
Okay.
But he, the letter that we got from Stephanie was that she wanted to step down once the final vote was taken from the Palumbo property.
Yes.
Now that they took that vote, now it's, it would make sense to put him on as a full-time member.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. So although we don't have members' motions on the agenda for this evening, this Board has worked together closely for the last six years, and I would like to give every Board member an opportunity to say a few words. And I'd like to start off with Selectman Corinne Riley, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, I'd like to thank the residents of Sargus that elected me for three terms, and I hope I served you well. I believe we made up an effective board that got many things accomplished. We addressed and voted on a lot during these six years, but getting our town through the years during COVID really stands out more than the rest. Because we had so many good people in government, the Town Manager, his staff, public safety, inspectional services, education, and many others that came together to get through this toughest time that we, in our time, in our history. I want to thank Scott for addressing many requests and concerns I had as a Selectman during my years on the Board, and look forward to seeing those in the works come to fruition. I worked with great clerks in the past, still missing my first clerk and friend, Wendy Thank you to Janice Gerose, that filled in when we needed her, and Meredith, who is our clerk now. I want to thank this group of wonderful people. I will miss working with you all, Deb, Mike, Jeff, and Anthony. I wish you all the best of luck in your bid for reelection. You all deserve to be reelected. I want to wish everyone who is running in this election good luck. Thank you all for getting involved, and after the election, win or lose, keep engaged in our town. Everyone says they're gonna, but they don't. Everyone needs volunteers. Please stay involved. Last but not least, I thank my family, and especially my husband, Chris, who got these gorgeous flowers for me, for being there. It's not an easy job at times and takes a toll on our family life. The support you all gave me was all that I could ask for. Although my time on the Board is ending, I will continue to volunteer my time with organizations that better our community. Again, thank you for everyone, and Mr. Vogler, for all the coverage you've done that I've asked you to put in the paper. I appreciate that. So with that, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
What about that sticker campaign?
So I heard.
I printed them up already. I'm in. What term?
Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to thank the Board for the past six years. It's been an honor to serve with all of you. I know we don't always agree, but we always get along. All our meetings are civil, and I think it's clear, we all have one common goal. We want what's best for the Town of Sargus, and it certainly shows. I've had the honor of sitting up here for the past 16, well, not the past 16 years, but for 16 years, and I thoroughly enjoyed every one of them. If I get, if I am to be reelected, that will be my last term. I've said it before, but that will be it. I love being part of this community and representing the Town of Sargus. It's been a great run, and I wish you all the best in the upcoming election. I'm sure all of you do well. Everyone on this Board is highly respected throughout the community, and we have some great challenges in the audience, and everyone that's running is certainly deserving of a spot on this Board, whether it's this time or another time. I hope whoever's not successful and they want to continue with politics, that you run again in the future. But I certainly want to thank you, sitting next to me, Jeff. We've been friends forever, and you're certainly, out of all the people I've served with, I said it before, you are certainly the smartest one I've ever served with. No one knows their stuff better than you do. It's been an honor. Deb, I think you are everywhere. People certainly respect you. That's why you're sitting where you are, and that's why you sat where you, on the, on the school committee in the same spot. You're a highly respected person throughout the town. Michael, the Serino family is like my family. I called all your aunts and my aunt too. It's part of growing up in East Sargus. But it's truly been an honor to serve with you as long as I have, Mike. And Corinne, I'm not going to get into it. I talked to you on the phone, I started crying, so I'm going to leave it at that. You know, I love you and I wish you the best. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Selectman Serino.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Corinne, I didn't know you too well before you got on the Board, but ever since you've been on the Board, we've become very friendly with each other, and even the other Board members, you know, might disagree on an issue, but we work well together. I think this has been a really well-working Board. And Deb, I've served with you the longest, back in 2009, I believe. We served together on the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, you've always treated me well, and you've done a good job as Chairman, and I want to thank you for that. Anthony and Jeff, we all grew up together down in East Sargus, and our families know each other. So it's like one big family here, and I want to wish everybody well, and all the newcomers who are running, wish them well. And I keep getting involved. Like Anthony said, if you don't get elected, just keep getting involved, get on the Board and do whatever you can for the town. No one, no one loves the town as we do up here, and I, I know a lot of the candidates running certainly feel the same way, and I want to wish everybody well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first and foremost, Corinne, I knew you before the, before we started serving together, but I've got to know you a lot better over the last six years. It has been an absolute pleasure serving with you, and I'm sad to see you go. I understand, and you're definitely doing it for the right reasons. I think we all have our reasons when we want to get back to family life and allow others to step up and take the baton, if you will. I still wish for one more with you. I stand by that. But I think you're an incredible person. You've done so much for the town with everything that you've done. I know you have a huge responsibility with the Lions, and I know you're going to knock it out of the park like you always do. it out of the park like you always do. But it has been truly a pleasure to serve with you over the past six years and I wish you nothing but the best going forward. And I'm glad, I'm sure your family's going to be happy to have a little bit more time with you, home and present, as opposed to out at meetings, et cetera. So for that, you know, congratulations. I wish you all the best and I know we'll still be in touch and et cetera.
Absolutely. Thank you.
To my fellow board members, you know, it's sad that this, this group of five is definitely coming to an end. I've had the pleasure of serving with Deb for the last 10 years, many of which, I think six of them have been with you as chair and you've been the utmost professional. Nobody questions your desire, your passion, your knowledge, and your willingness to do whatever it takes for the Town of Saugus. You are an extreme professional person and someone that everyone should look up to. I do appreciate all you bring to our town, past service and present and hopefully future. Mike and Anthony, again, I think it's all been said, you know, we don't, we can agree to disagree. That makes for good, we shouldn't all be up here singing kumbaya. If we have a bunch of people that are all thinking the same 100% of the time, then that doesn't make for, for, in my opinion, good, you know, considerations for what's best for our community. We all have different constituents. We all have people who support us for different reasons, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we do it with the utmost respect for one another and I think we all bring a different, a different view and vision, but it's always for the better good of our town. I appreciate your friendship for all of you. I wish you nothing but the best. I hope, I hope we all have a chance to serve again together, but we do have an amazing group of people who also would like a seat at this, at this table and as Anthony said, they're equally deserving. So Saugus can't get it wrong. There's no wrong answer in the, in the upcoming election. I feel like whatever five members are up here and you have your heart in the right place and you're doing it to make Saugus a better place and I do feel as though, no matter what the, what the voters decide, it's going to be right for our town. And in closing, to Mr. Manager and Meredith, Scott, you know I support you 100%. I think you're, you've done a Herculean job for this, for this town. You might get some criticism sometimes. We have some constructive feedback on, on things you need to do, but you do, what you accomplish and what you get done for our town and our community does not go unnoticed. And, you know, everybody, it's easy to be a Monday, Monday morning quarterback and it's easy to, to say, I should have done this and I'd do it this way and I'd do it that way, but in the end, you run a tight ship. The town's on impeccable, amazing financial footing. We're heading in the right direction in so many different areas and I commend you and your administration for everything you guys do. And Meredith, Corinne touched upon it, you had big shoes to fill. You had Janice right before you, who had been clerk for many, many years and then stepped in and filled in. And then you had Wendy, who was an absolute rock star before her. So the fact that you've done it, you've done it with professionalism, you've gotten your share of criticisms from constituents, et cetera, who've come forth and we tried to right the ship there and make sure you felt like we have your back, because we do. And I appreciate all that you have done. I think you've done an amazing job and I look forward, if I'm, if I'm lucky enough to have a seat up here, I look forward to serving with you again for the remaining of my term. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini. I want to first thank my fellow board members for putting your trust in me, voting me in as your chairman. It is sincerely appreciated. I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you, Anthony, Jeff, Michael, and Corinne. I want to thank the residents for their support and supporting this board over the last six years. You can see that we all deeply care about our community. I want to thank our town manager, Scott Crabtree, who I believe has done a phenomenal job putting our town in the right direction. When you took over, our town was almost in receivership. We were in dire straits and now we're double A-plus with standard empires. We have all these various projects going on, all for the benefit of our community. You always put Saugus first and it's deeply appreciated. I want to thank our town meeting members, school committee, finance committee, and all the other volunteer boards and commissions for their time and effort. It does take a village to move our town forward and again, I appreciate everything that everybody does. A special thank you to Janice, who was our town clerk, who stepped in, and to Meredith, our current clerk, for all her hard work each and every day, taking care of our selectmen business. And I know that it can be difficult and she's called me some days, six, seven times with different things that have come into our office that she's had to handle that have been difficult. And the board has a small token of appreciation for you. So if you could come up, if you would, please. This is from all of us. Thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, Meredith.
And of course, oh, one more, additional hugs. I want to thank SCTV. They're always here to cover our meetings. A lot of people can't make the meetings, but they do watch them on the cable station and it's important that the residents know what's happening within their town. I want to thank Mark Vogler, who is at all our meetings, making sure that he's covering all the important events and stories in our town. So thank you for all of your efforts throughout the many, many years that you've covered Saugus. Lastly, a special recognition of course goes to our friend Corinne Riley. This board is very lucky to have you. You, you're very amiable. People like you, they gravitate to you because you sit and you listen to what everybody has to say. You're clearly, you're dedicated to our community, you're dedicated to the residents, and it shows in everything that you do. And your presence on this board will be severely missed. I mean, you, you heard each and every one of us, it's heartfelt and we know that you're going to continue on with everything that you do. You're Madam Lioness, you're now Secretary of the Saugus Business Education Collaborative. We know that your volunteer work will continue and I really think it's totally awesome how your husband stands by you in everything that you do. He's here tonight and I think that's, that partnership is just something that everybody strives for. You have such a phenomenal family and just presence in our community. And the board does have a small token that we want to send you away with.
Thank you.
Candidates sitting on this board, Anthony, Jeff, and Michael, you've done.
And Corinne in her sticker campaign.
We're going to have a sticker campaign for you, Corinne?
Yeah, that's right, sticker campaign. No.
I'm just sorry, I'm just myself, I'm just sorry that I didn't realize it was St. Patty's Day. Got Mike and you in green. I didn't wear my green tie, right? Did I miss something here?
St. Patty's Day.
Very coordinated here.
It wasn't on, this is a brand-new suit and I wanted to wear it for my final, my final banging of the gavel here.
You look very, you look lovely and Michael looks dapper today.
Thank you. With that said, thank you, everyone. Thank you, board members. Would somebody please make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
That is seconded by the chair. All those in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, Saugus.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.